Reflect that it's 4:35. Where is it?
I can't see and we're going immediately to the executive section. So we'll be back at six o'clock. Thank you.
That was... Yeah. Get up.
Shh.
I'm sorry.
Shall I do it?
Go for it.
I enjoy doing that. I haven't done it my entire time as mayor. I'll call this regular session's Greenville City Council order, let the record reflect. It is 6:05 and I'll ask John Hayden, our library director, AKA, come up.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we really appreciate this day. We thank you for the time and the blessings you give us, the blessings of family and friends, and the freedom and in the faith we can have in you, Lord. We ask you to be with the mayor and the city council tonight and those others who will be talking about things in our minds and our hearts, Father, and give them wisdom and guidance as they make the decisions for the city. Bless their families as well and give them strength. The families are so important to us. And be with the city leadership, Father, and help us always to look to you for direction, Lord. And we just thank you for everything you've done for us. And be with our country, Father, and help us to be encouragers and help us to be peacemakers, Father, and help us to be ones who will help our neighbor out when they need us and be servants in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. I have a proclamation tonight, National Night Out. Please get him to come forward. Acclamation for National Night Out on October the 7th. Whereas 2025 marks the 42nd Annual National Night Out campaign, unique crime drug prevention event sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch. Whereas National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Greenville to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. Whereas National Night Out helps to build a safer community by becoming familiar with your neighbors and your surroundings, National Night Out trants over a culture that isolates us from each other and allows us to rediscover our own communities. Now therefore, the Greenville City Council does proclaim October 7th, 2025 to be the National Night Out, to be National Night Out, and urge all citizens to join with the Greenville Police Department to bring unity into our community. Thank you very much. Do you want to talk about that any at all? And do we have, do we have the locations where there's a place to be at?
We have some locations, but it's still not too late that if anybody wants to sign their neighborhood up, they can by contacting Officer James Hamilton with the Operations Support Division with the police department, and we'll put their name on the list and we will make sure that we have officers there.
Okay. How are people going to find out about those? Can they get on the website and see?
Yes, sir. Once we have a final list, it'll be on the city website, it'll also be on the police department's website.
Very nice. We go and visit all those communities and it's a great thing. So, thank you very much. You're welcome. So, I'll call your attention to two placeholders in the agenda, citizens to be heard and public testimony. Citizens to be heard is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on items that are not on the agenda or scheduled for public hearing. There is one public hearing tonight, and public testimony is for items for citizens to address the council on items that are on the agenda, starting with ordinances tonight. We have one ordinance and we have resolutions and the consent calendar. So, if you'd like to address the city council on any of these issues, please complete a citizen's comment card and present it to the city secretary. Are there citizens? Okay. Please come forward and state your name.
Charlie Ralph.
Charlie Ralph. And I'm a resident in Greenville, and I was cited for having my RV parked in my driveway. It's not out in the street and that. And I looked up the ordinance and I didn't see any ordinance that said that it was, had to be over 22 feet, I think it is, that the city ordinance, and that's 22 feet from the end of the tongue to then the trailer. Whereas I know there are places in the city on streets where you couldn't even park that because there's enough area. My street is wider. I have almost 40 feet that I could put my trailer at park. I sent, gave the secretary some pictures of my trailer and the location where it's at. She's welcome to pass them around and maybe you can see half of them. So, I'm seeking, why not change the ordinance that actually reflects what you don't want? Is the RV sitting out in the street or RV blocking the crosswalk? You address that if it's on the grass, but you don't address the sides because all streets aren't the same in the city. So, I like to see a variance, a change.
Well, I don't know if you know, citizens to be heard, we're not here to interact with you.
Oh, I know, I know.
And so, we'll take your input. We have your contact information, so some of them will reach out to you and we'll reconsider your comments.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I have copies that I had to take out of the binder before the council.
Okay. Could you put the mic down a little bit closer to you so we can hear you, please? Somebody help you with that? Thank you.
Good evening. I am here this evening seeking assistance from this council.
Just your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Louisa Bryant, 50151, Joe Ramsey Boulevard East, apartment 1025, Greenville 75401.
Thank you.
Okay. May I begin?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. This evening I'm seeking assistance from this council pertaining to two issues involving city matters which at this time may be or may not be in an investigative stage within the city manager's office and the police department. I have no way of confirming anything since there has been no formal discussion between the numerous individuals I reached out to for help and myself. I now respectfully request the council to activate some dialogue or possibly a meeting to discuss the troubling behavior of an officer with the Greenville Police Department. This officer by his own volition took it upon himself to email and phone my granddaughter and my son living in Washington and maintaining that he believes that I, a private citizen, was suffering from a mental illness. This officer made some assertions, quite a few, such as I was a threat to myself concerned about my personal safety, I was irate and confused during a visit to the police station, and much more. He threatened that if I continued to escalate my complaints or return to the police department that he, knowing that police officers could not put their hands on me, would call the mental unit who would then restrain me and transfer me to a mental hospital. I understand, my son received an email from this officer, which I can get for you, that, and I quote, "I've copied a mental health unit in," end of quote. And he also implying that anyone who is always taking notes and keeps binders has a mental problem. Now, to set the record straight, I was going to say please refer to the papers there that you have. I have the chief of verification of my allegations. You will find copies of 13 medical records with physical exams diagnosis. They are recorded by 13 different doctors and specialists and go back several years. I do have in my possession maybe 60 or 70 physical exam records also going back several years. These physical exams include neurologic, psychologic, and mental status, and all diagnoses attest to my being alert or oriented to plus or normal, and of course many more complimentary if you guys can see that. For a little history, I have included it to you, a medical report from 1988 where it chronicles that after driving myself to the emergency room and being admitted with a blood pressure reading of 230 over 148, I believe there is a neurological diagnosis that is worth reading. Being aware at age 30 with two sons, the account of this tragic event can be found in the binder with you. I have been the sole provider for all my financial responsibilities. No one contributed to or paid any of my financial burdens ever. And I do retain an 800 credit rating and still pay a single-digit interest rate which shows I have never wavered in meeting my financial responsibilities. I live alone and take care of all my personal, financial, and medical affairs on my own. I know.
Ma'am, we have a three-minute limit.
I'm sorry.
We have a three-minute limit for citizens to be heard, so if you could finish.
Well, I can't, but I can give you notice of the whole story, of the background leading up to this. As I said, and may I, okay. I just wanted to say that I guess I get, throwing me off by going this. Okay. I'm sorry you threw me off by that. Anyway, what I'm trying to say is I have had nothing but problems since I originally asked, requested an incident report that I was entitled to with the Public Information Act. I can't, I've given you copies, two of them, that show this incident report is half blank, half the page is blank. It has two case numbers that you can't have, but I have four copies of case numbers, but it also, the second half of it has false information. But I can, I cannot get, I have been from the officers to the sergeants to the lieutenants to the captains, I have tried to reach the assistant chief, this is my instructions. All I have been done, we can't help you. Go refer, instruct me, direct me. Like I said, it's in the files of the city managers, that's my last stop, and I was warned that if, you know, if I continue to go through the crawling up the instructions a lot, I've done everything. And I am.
Well, thank you for your input. I'm sure you know we're not able to respond to that.
Oh, I don't.
Since you have these documents, would you like the documents back?
No, no, that's why I took them. The young man told me that I couldn't.
And thank you very much.
Okay. Can I expect any reaction or any report from the council on my situation? Because I'm stuck.
The council certainly wouldn't be responding, but through the city manager or the chief of police, perhaps they will be, but.
Well, like I said, I've tried, I've gone.
Individual council members or myself will not be responding to your.
I just have to know the rules.
We will take your input.
Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 6A, consideration in action on an ordinance authorizing a tax abatement agreement between the City of Greenville and Royal Oak Enterprises, LLC, for property located at 6202 Industrial Boulevard, Greenville, Texas. Greg.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Greg Sims, Greenville Board of Development. Tonight, we want to review again, we were here back in, I think it was June 12th or June area of the calendar to present to you Royal Oak Expansion Project that they want to consider Texas versus where they are currently at in Alabama, Birmingham. And so when we, you had the, one of the corporate folks here that made the presentation to you, Randy Beech. He couldn't make it today. He's out of town. But I do have the area director, Russ Sims, right here, not related to me, but Russ is out of the Atlanta corporate office. So he's here to answer any questions you may have. But we're going to just go briefly through this because you've already seen it once. If you remember, we talked about this in the reinvestment zone that the city created. Thank you so much for creating that tonight. You have before you the actual tax abamements to consider a vote on. I think I can do this. Point at the screen. Point here. Does that work? Okay. Russ, notice back in 1985, they became partners with Greenville, Texas, and it was in the Herald Banner, their groundbreaking for their plant, which was called Pine Mountain, over in the industrial park. And they started making Pine Mountain logs by the way back then, in 1985. And he was real proud of that. They actually had that hanging up in their boardroom, they said, of the Greenville plant. So it was really cool. Since 1953, they've been dedicated to the charcoal products category industry. Their corporate headquarters in Roswell, Georgia, they have 12 manufacturing facilities and over 600 people. So these are some of the products that they have made, and these are the plants located across the United States and a lot there in the Arkansas, Missouri area, and in charcoal facilities, and also Pine Mountain Fire Logs, which is in Texas and in Alabama, which we're considering. We're trying to recruit the Alabama operation to Texas and not go vice versa. We don't want to do that. These are some of the products that you've probably bought and purchased at Pine Mountain Logs, certainly, and the Royal Oak Charcoal, their new product, the Charcoal Pellets, which Russ is telling us that he's helped formulate that, I think, and helped get that going, and it's only been out a couple of months. And then they've got the diamond matches and a lot of the other products they make to help with the grilling industry. This is a site plan, the buildings there, the bigger buildings there, shows you, the buildings on the left, the picture on the left is showing the entire site that they have expansion land. Buildings on the right is a zoom in to the car buildings that are there with the manufacturing warehouse and the additional land they have. This is just a survey of that whole property. It's kind of an upside-down L, if you will. It's on the Neatex rail line. Rail's a big deal to them, bringing in wax, hot wax to the plant to make the Pine Mountain Logs and also future forestry products to manufacture all their products. Right now, the plant has approximately 53 hourly workers. They want to add additional workers to that for a total of 107 over a three-year period. And so they're going to add, they're at one shift now, they're going to add to three shifts when this completion is done. And they're going to add some managerial, they kind of double, almost double their managerial capacity. This is the timeline. I'm not going to read all these digital, but these are the timeline when they're going to bring on new lines, they bring on new buildings as they go through the years. They will grow their plant and then add on new employees with each line that they bring on and each products that they bring in-house. Yeah, hit it, but I don't know. There we go. Next steps, just talking about what they'd like to do, what they can do in Missouri and Birmingham, we don't want to talk about that. We want to talk about Greenville. But they're a big community supporter, you know, they've been here a long time in our community. They've been employing a lot of, probably generations now from '85, generations of folks. The tax abatement you have before you tonight addresses the 10-year tax abatement. As you know, we cannot abate anything on the tax rolls today, currently by state law. Today, currently, they have land improvement value of 41, 64, 700, $4,164,000. They have in machinery and equipment, $6,714,840. We also, they would like to seek a 50% tax abatement, and only, they want to start it in January 1, '27. So by state law, they can future start the tax, take full advantage of that, the assets they put on the ground. I do want to say, Board of Development supported this project. Frank Stevenson is a good board member right here of our board. Thank you, Council, for putting Frank on our board, and they voted unanimous in favor of the tax abatement as well. Russ, did you want to come up and say anything?
Good evening. Russ Sims. I'm here to represent the organization. We're looking forward to the opportunity to actually grow our business. I joined the organization just a couple of years ago with, one of my key assignments was to grow this Pine, the Pine Mountain and the Fire Log business. And we have a lot of new opportunities, new marketing plans and products that we're about to roll out, and we're looking to consolidate. If, perhaps you saw or you remember, but right now, we just run one shift in each plant. But we have the capacity to run two to three shifts in a plant. So just from a cost perspective, we want to consolidate these two plants into one location, and, you know, we would look forward for the opportunity to do that here in Greenville.
Any questions? Okay, Greg, thank you for being here tonight.
Russ is a good Marine, too. By the way, at the county, I love to say this because he lives in Georgia, but we got him to pledge to the Texas at the county today. So I think we got him. Thank you, Mayor.
Good job. Good job, Greg. Okay. If there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance authorizing a tax abatement? There being no one, is there anyone like to speak in favor of this ordinance? I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 6A?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And it passes unanimously with two members absent.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, ordinance 7A, consideration in action on an ordinance authorizing or establishing a police department classification for the City of Greenville. Uriah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall back in, I believe, May, I came before the council with ordinances to establish the ordinance for classifications and headcounts for police and fire. Moving forward, this is in conjunction with our approved budget for fiscal year '25, ' '26. There are no changes for fire, so that's the reason you don't see an ordinance for that. But police does increase their headcount by three, and that is what you are proposing tonight.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll just ask, is there any, there's no public testimony tonight at all on any items? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 7A?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Please vote.
Did I get my deal?
And it passes unanimously. Item 8A, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing contract for the library infrastructure facility improvement reimbursement grant from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission.
Mayor, city council, I came last meeting and just talked about the grant we received for the library infrastructure grant. We're going to get a mobile touch booth. We're just asking you to approve that summer we'll be able to sign that contract with TSLAC, the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. Just asking if you have any questions about it. It's going to be a great asset for a library and other thing we could do there. So just asking you to approve the contract. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Consideration in action on a resolution nominating candidates to the Hunt County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It is time, once the legislature reorganized the appraisal districts, not this session, but the previous session, there were two members that were serving a year term, and so those terms are now up and need to be renominated.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion regarding this item 8B?
I make a motion to approve, or a motion to nominate Paul Painter and Jim Bob Grove to the Hunt County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Second. Second.
And it passes unanimously. Item 8C, consideration in an action on a resolution authorizing the purchase of the Sports Park Center fitness equipment from Marathon Fitness. Brett?
Yes, Mayor, Council, good evening. So back in January, council approved an agreement with Marathon for Reese Davis's equipment. So what this would be doing is getting the equipment needed for Reese Davis, or for Sports Park Center, I'm sorry. So it'll feature between 90 and 100 pieces of exercise equipment, and there's kind of the final diagram that we have for the facility. And so the total cost is going to be $756,123.72. And $16,000 of that is for tariffs that is built into that. So obviously, if we get the order in and get the stuff here, then we can avoid the tariff, so that would be up to the $756. So be more than happy to answer any questions.
This is only for the new rec center?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't include anything for the Reese Davis?
No, that was already done in January.
Okay.
So yes, or yeah, that was already ordered, and they're delivering it in October, in a couple of weeks, so.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
And it passes unanimously. Item 8D, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing professional services development agreement with Garfield Public Private LLC for services related to task two and three, consisting of planning, design, financing, and construction of hotel convention center and parking related to the project. Summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If you guys recall, back in March of '25, council approved the agreement with Garfield Public Private Services, or Professional Services, to be able to perform a feasibility study. That task one is now complete. Council has reviewed that. And now this item would be to move on to task two and three, which need to happen concurrently. And so that's what you have before you tonight is to approve task two, which would be $135,000 for the architectural, engineer, and interior design, and then also construction estimates in task three for a total of $180,000. Both, there was budget, that was budgeted in the current budget that we're in now, and then when we move to the new budget in a few weeks, the remaining $130,000 was budgeted in the '25, '26 budget.
Any questions? Okay. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8D?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And it passes 45. Okay. I'll ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City council meeting minutes from September 9, and resolutions approving an agreement with Placer Labs, Lexapo LLC, S2 Verify, Criteria, Perry Weather, Inc., and United Ag and Turf.
Are there any questions regarding any of these items? If not, is there a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Second.
And it passes unanimously. City staff, council reports, Greenville Municipal Auditorium, I asked, auditorium asked Mica to come give us an update about what's going to happen.
Sure. Yeah, it's exciting. It's a couple of days from now, so, and of course, everybody is invited, the whole public's invited. It's a free event, so we've got, we put some free tickets online so people could RSVP, and I think we're at 480 something right now, and that doesn't include the DRI folks. So it should be a full house on Thursday night. So at 5:30, the Chamber of Commerce will come over, will do a ribbon cutting. We're going to do that on the stage, since most of the changes happened inside the auditorium and not outside. Didn't make sense to do it in front of the building. So we'll do that at 5:30 with those representatives from the chamber. And then people will be free to sort of move through the space, look at some of the changes that have happened. DRI is going to bring some food. We'll have the concessions set up as well. I think we're actually going to do that up in the lobby. And so that'll be available. And then at 6:15, the program will begin. And the program's going to consist of comments from the city. So the mayor will speak. I'll offer a very brief introduction, trying to keep my comments short. Then DRI, which is our project, the company that we worked with, they're going to come out and speak. They're going to show a video about the process and some of the changes. So as they've gone through this, they've been getting video and photographs of the old systems and the tear down and the construction and all that happened. So that will happen, and then, then they've asked me to come back out again to sort of do a highlight of the new system. So they're going to really show everything off with the lights, the sound, the smoke machine, the projector, all of the new equipment, to really show everybody what it can do. Then they're going to have some of their vendors come out. So Digico is the company that put in the sound console, and then L Acoustics is the company that did the sound, the speakers, so all that side of it. And then ETC, which is Electronic Theater Controls, they did all the lighting. So there are supposed to be people from those groups coming out. They're going to talk about their products and why those were chosen for the facility, why they fit the facility well. Then Digico is going to come back out one more time. They're going to play one more video, and then everything gets turned over to the part that probably most people are most excited about, which is the band. So we've got a band coming in out of Dallas. It's a party band. They're called La Freak. And they're a '70s, '80s disco band. So they're going to put on a great show. They're going to play for about an hour, hour and a half. And then it's just everybody enjoying exactly what we built it for, right? We didn't, yes, we can use it for the first part of what we're doing, which is somebody to stand and do sort of a corporate-style presentation, I guess, you know, where you have a microphone and the screen and all that. And the facility can absolutely do that. But that's not what we're going to use it for most of the time. So that's why we brought the band in, so everybody can see, you know, this is what it's all about. And we're going to have concerts and shows. That's the whole point of the facility. So everybody's going to get a chance to see that. So we're expecting it to be a really fun night, and everybody to have a good time and enjoy seeing what we spent the money on. It's very exciting. They actually sent me a video this morning that they're preparing for, and the lights were just going everywhere and the sound, and it's pretty incredible. I think you guys are going to be very impressed with what you're going to see, so.
Any questions? We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is city council discussion of proposed agenda items. Are there any proposed agenda items any council member would like to bring forward?
Yeah, I'd like to look into future discussions on Monty Stratton Boulevard with the increased use of that area and the condition of that road. I'd like to see us look at possibly doing some justice to that road that wasn't done the first time and getting it completed properly. And then also the possible future extension of it out to Highway 69.
And I have an item. I'd like to revisit our camping. I'd like to revisit our camping ordinance in light of the Supreme Court's Grants Pass decision, 2024, and also to ensure that we're compliant with Governor Admit's plan to support the camping ordinance, camping ban that we had, House Bill 1925. I'd like to revisit that, the changes, and I think we need to look at that, as some services are being impacted by this decision. Any others? Okay, if not, there are no boards and commission minutes tonight, we're going back briefly into executive session. We will be taking a vote when we come out of executive session. Thank you for being here tonight, and we hope to see you next time. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.[581.54]